If I can get started first with a roll call please.
Mr. Tavera?
Here.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Here.
Mr. Jewitt?
Here.
Mr. Francisco?
Here.
Mrs. Klinger?
Here.
Alright, first up is our pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, to get started, we have a meeting agenda, if I can get a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, second to my Mr. Jewitt, roll call please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries, we have an approved meeting agenda and first up on that is communications to the board. First one is the disposal list from Dr. King, any questions in regards to that from the board? Hearing none, next up is the review of the FOIA report, again online, any questions from the board in regards to the FOIA report as amended? Alright, and then third up, reviewing contracts under a thousand, there were nothing to report, so now we will move on to public comment. As always, members of the public, we participate in public comment during regular board meetings by attending in person or submitting electronic public comment form. Please note the speakers are limited to three minutes. Electronic public comments are accepted up until noon on the day of the regularly scheduled meeting and the public commenter is contacted to confirm identity. Once confirmed, electronic public comment is provided to all board members in written form. A link to the electronic public comment form is online. We did not have any electronic public comment and we do not have any public, so we will skip now on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you Board President Francisco and Board of Education. At a recent board meeting, a question was asked regarding our outreach to and connected to the development of alumni database. While we continue to build upon an alumni database, much of our work in college and career readiness focuses on current students and developing robust post-secondary plans whether they're still our students. We are using SchoolLinks to collect information about seniors intended both secondary plan and their personal contact information. This is the second year of working on this process, so many of our contacts are still quite young. As part of our commitment to preparing students for life beyond high school, Round Lake High School proudly celebrates National Career Development Month each November with a series of events that build meaningful alumni and community connections. One of the highlights is a set of career panels that represent all eight Illinois State Board of Education-defined career pathways. These panels feature professionals across industries, including many proud Round Lake High School alumni who return to share their experiences and advise with current students. In addition, our engineering courses include mock interviews designed to simulate real-world experiences. These interviews are conducted by local professionals, many of whom are RLHS alum, working in engineering firms throughout the region. Their insight helps students build confidence and understand the expectations of today's workforce. We also use SchoolLinks, our post-secondary planning platform, to track students' pathways after graduation. This platform allows us to stay connected with alum, engage industry partners, and to advise both groups to participate in events like our career expos, job shadowing, and mentoring opportunities. Through these efforts, we continue to strengthen the bridge between our schools and the world of work. The Round Lake Police Department will be utilizing a small portion of Round Lake High School on July 8th and July 29th for rapid deployment training. Rapid deployment training focuses on the immediate and effective response of law enforcement to critical incidents. Manchester United, a partner of the Chicago Bears, is interested in hosting a soccer clinic at the Round Lake High School Stadium on Sunday, July 27th. Say it again?
Everyone's excited.
I know, I know. Details and final confirmation are still pending, a team has been assembled and will meet to discuss final plans as soon as additional information is provided by our contact with the Bears and I have to say, Gus Silva and I went to high school together, so I'm taking a little credit for Man U here. So anyway, yeah, that that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Mendoza, any questions from the board? Hearing none, it is exciting news. Alright, next up committee reports, Community Engagement Committee update.
Okay, we had a pretty late agenda this evening. One of the main things we discussed was revamping the elementary open house structure, they want to kind of revamp it, there was some feedback given at the end of or the beginning of last year, I suppose, relating to consolidating the open houses along with, excuse me, I'm in the wrong. My apologies, consolidating the open houses with the traditional meet and greets, they noticed that the open houses, the attendance really gets low. So they're creating kind of a standard standard structure for that. I think it's brilliant, the Community Engagement Committee supports it fully. They have kind of a structure where they're going to have kind of classroom presentations and information stations, if you guys hit a chance to check it out, I think it's going to really be helpful for the teachers, do you want to add?
Yes, just one bit, it's consolidating with their fall family events, not not the meet and greet, so it's a little bit further out into the school year.
Pardon, that is correct, yes. The other thing we discussed was the planning, the calendars in relation to us as board members, and there's a couple different options to kind of eliminate or reduce human error. One of them was linking our calendars personally to the Outlook, so the board members can manually subscribe to each individual school and kind of create the Outlook calendar themselves however they like it. Excuse me, this option requires the board members though to select multiple calendars and I think there's like a 10 or 11 calendars somewhere around along that. Due to that manual kind of subscription process, there is concern that there would be more errors regarding that. The other option is to utilize the mobile app calendar. This is where the board members can use the district mobile app and download it and then within the app, the users can select which schools and which events that they want. That one is kind of the preferred method, but they know that each kind of board member has their own kind of requests or preferences, so that's going to be something that we'll be looking into, but they wanted feedback on how that goes, but they can do both actually. Anything you want to add to that?
So we'll send out information to the full board because you have an option, you can link to each of the individual ICALS for the district and school calendars in your Outlook calendar. We had we had created a new calendar for the board this past year so that you could do that if you wanted. That way you weren't getting all the individual invites, if you recall. And then if you don't want to have it in your Outlook calendar, you're just accessing the calendars on the mobile app. So it just depends on whatever your preference is, but we'll get instructions to you on the connection to the Outlook.
So Jennifer had said that the first method has a potential of having a higher amount of errors, is that correct? Because it's all coming from the same calendar, correct?
No, not not errors, there's more clicking for you as a board member, so if you're in your Outlook calendar, you'll have to select the different calendars you want to see. And you can have them on all the time, it's just the one time that you need to do that initial link and then you're good in Outlook. But if you don't want to have to un-click, click, or whatever your view preference is, really.
More potential. On our part, to be clear. So that essentially was it, we looked over the monthly snapshot, we're seeing some fun interactions with TikTok, it's a little lower of course because it's summer, but all in all, it was that was kind of in a nutshell what we discussed, thank you for your feedback.
Thank you for the recap, any additional questions for Ms. Klinger?
Actually, I do, so when for the calendar dealio, when did we want to make a decision on that?
I don't know if it's necessarily a decision, it's just that they can do both.
It's more of an individual, it sounded like it was more of an individual decision, each board member will get a couple different options and you can pick what fits you.
We we changed the the calendar entry on our end internally, so creating those individual Google calendars for each school. So that's different for us internally, which gives you another option for viewing the access.
All right, hearing no additional questions, we will now move to approval of open meeting minutes.
Great, I need a motion to approve the June 11th, 2025 special meeting facility planning session.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second to my Mrs. Klinger, roll call please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion to approve the June 14th, 2025 regular board meeting minutes.
June 16th?
June 16th.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second to my Mrs. Tavera, roll call please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yeah.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the following items. The accounts pay will report for $3,254,530.33, the July 7th, 2025 employment report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewitt, second to my Mrs. Klinger, roll call please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries, and that will bring us to introduction of administration, and I don't have a name of who's upcoming up, so whoever wants to jump in first, go.
Good evening, Board of Education, as a quick reminder, I'm your new Executive Director of Special Education, Sharon Jacobellis, and I am very pleased to announce our new Coordinator of Outplacement and Transition, Elizabeth Burgess. Elizabeth brings over two decades of dedication to special education and student services. She began her career at Woodland District 50, where she spent 11 years as a teacher and later served for seven years as the Special Education Administrator for preschool and kindergarten. Following that, she expanded her impact as the Assistant Director of Programs and Services for the Exceptional Learners Collaborative for four years, and most recently served as the Director of Outplacement Services for Highland Park and Deerfield High Schools. Elizabeth lives in Round Lake with her husband Ken and their three daughters Nora, Celia, and Clara. In her free time, she enjoys reading, family adventures, and traveling, especially to Disney and the beach, welcome Elizabeth.
Thank you so much for having me and bringing me on as part of the team here at District 116. I feel like I'm coming home, being a Round Lake resident and being able to drive a short distance to work every day is lovely. But the the staff that I have met so far as part of this team here at 116 has been so welcoming and a true feeling of coming home. So I really appreciate becoming part of the team here and I'm excited to see the impact of our students, our young adults at the Transition Center and what they can learn and do to become independent, but also our students who are outplaced and how we can help bring them back to District 116 to be better served here, thank you.
Good evening Board, I am excited and here to introduce Patricia Aluna, she is our new multilingual education director. Patricia is a proud daughter of an immigrant and grew up here in Lake County, Illinois. She has experience in bilingual classrooms since 2013, along with two bachelor's degrees from Illinois State University in international business and then also in bilingual, bicultural elementary education. She also obtained a master's degree in educational leadership from American College of Education and has now entered a doctoral program. She's overseen bilingual programs in grades K through 8 and did also collaborate with high school districts as a part of her work K through 8. She monitored spending and reporting for various federal and state grants, evaluated staff, implemented after-school programs, and initiated opportunities for visiting international teachers. One of her proudest accomplishments includes streamlining numerous processes for multilingual programs, including identification, screening, monitoring, and administering of language assessments. She's a strong advocate of multilingual education to ensure that students keep their native language and also learn English in equitable environments in order to achieve academic and lifelong success. In her free time, she enjoys long road trips to national parks, reading books of leisure, organizing family events, gardening, and cooking with her family. So please enjoy me, join me in welcoming Patricia.
Hi, thank you so much for welcoming me to the Brown Lake Area School District, I'm very excited to begin my journey here. I am a resident of Lake County, so this has always been in my backyard. I've been welcomed by many people, I hope to remember names and faces very soon. But more importantly, I hope to be able to make an impact in the community and the student achievement for bilingual learners.
This company is in the UK, so they're not SAPA compliant, they're not bound by SAPA because they're a foreign company. But the UK follows the European standard for data privacy. That coupled with the fact that what we're sharing is pretty paramount, what amounts to directory information, we feel pretty good that we're not giving away vulnerable data for our students to some other entity. We put procedures in place and other things in place to ensure data integrity and security going forward.
And as a reminder, on on the balance of it, EU standards are actually a little bit higher than the lack that we have here in the stateside.
That is correct, in general terms. Just just making sure I'm being as honest as I can be, they won't be SAPA compliant, right? But again, the information that we're sharing is directory information, so it's not that big of a risk as far as what we see.
Yes, as I mentioned, it was reviewed by finance and that it's always a question we ask is SAPA compliance is that compliance with data integrity for anything when we interact with third-party vendors that we're sharing our family or student data. But again, this is the first overseas company that we are dealing with. Not not the last, but it's the first. So we went through this pretty diligently, because again, this is the first time, it's not my first time dealing with a company overseas in my professional experience, which was able to bring some insight as we do here for the district.
I'll just say at the end of the day, this is a business decision, at the end of the day, we feel that this company provides a value with the software they're providing us that outweighs the risk of not being SAPA compliant.
Agreed.
Hearing no additional conversation?
Right, I need a motion for the approval of test parents meeting agreement for the 2025-2026 school year in the amount of $15,862.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Klinger, second to my Mr. Jewitt, hearing no additional conversation, roll call please.
Mr. Tavera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewitt?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries, and that will bring us to new business and first up on that is Mr. Barrett.
Okay, good night, good evening and thank you for your time.
See you later, Mark.
I'm gone, long, it's been quite a day, as you can imagine. So during the excavation phase in the Murphy Elevator Project, we encountered unsuitable soils under the construction site in the east portion of the building. In order to install an elevator shaft, you need room above and below for the drive mechanisms necessary to lift and drop the elevator carriage. On our project, we needed to excavate down to a depth of 10 feet below what is referred to as finished floor elevation. Finished floor elevation to us is simply what you see when you when you step into those into the elevator and you're on the bottom floor, okay? So when the team excavated 10 feet below the finished floor, we found what was what was referred to as very soft consistency gray clay. And what your construction manager describes as a soupy mess is similar to what you'd see on a muddy riverbank, that is, when you step into it, you sink a few inches, that's literally what was below Murphy. Now the housing we're building for the elevator is a three-story shaft constructed of concrete, concrete masonry units and brick, which is a very significant load to support on that foundation below. So initially, what we did was we, after we got to the 10-foot mark, we dug down a test hole, a very large test hole, five feet down further, and we encountered the same soupy mess, still gray clay. Our lead architect recruited a geotechnical engineer to review the soil conditions and the recommendation was to excavate in one-foot increments to find stable soil to a maximum of 20 feet, so now it'd be 20 feet below that finished floor. We dug down to the 20, but to approximately 20, 21 feet below FFE, but we found the same conditions. So at a depth of 20 feet, it becomes impractical and unsafe to continue. Okay, so we had to have a deep foundation system designed and we need to construct this to support the three-story elevator shaft. Now, under the original building, what we found was that they supported the loads using a series of one-foot diameter wood timber piers and they were pile-driven down into the deep into the deep soils, the soft soil. And the only way I can describe that is it's similar to how you would design a commercial fishing dock. Those are the big pile-driven wood timbers, they look like telephone poles going down into the soil. Now next to that, what we found was an enormous four-foot concrete wall adjacent to this. So sizable measures have been taken to hold to hold that bearing under the original, under the original building. The solution now, as designed by a structural engineer, is to use what are referred to as helical piers. And helical piers are similar to what you would see if you were, if you had an auger and you were digging post holes on your deck. It's kind of like a big screw that they drive down into the soil. So the cost is significant and the problem has caused a construction delay. So we are moving to resolve the issues rapidly and we're So we are moving to resolve the issues rapidly, and we're trying to do so using structurally sound construction and engineering principles. Mrs. Bennett has the ask.
Can I, I just want to compliment Mark on standing on top of this. I'm, I don't know anything, I mean, I'm lucky I can change like a light bulb on my house. And I went over there, I got to see it, he explained it, and what I appreciate about Mark, he's able to take, in my world, which is very complex information, communicate it in simple ways that I can understand, and I think all of us in the room clearly understand what you just explained. So I very much appreciate the way you've communicated that, so thank you.
Okay, so tonight, we're asking the board to approve a revised contract amount of the initial elevator bid. The initial cost was $1,115,000, and the additional cost of the change order that is part of tonight's packet is an additional $81,540.82. So that brings the total contract amount up to 1.196,540.82. The change order is for the additional excavation and the backfill that was conducted so far. It does not include the helical piers that Mark has talked about this evening, so that's coming soon. Let's see. Just a reminder, a part of the initial bid cost did include a $110,000 contingency fund. This 82,000, approximately 82,000, is not being applied to that at this time. So far, we've used approximately 10,000, maybe a little bit less, for some changes that we've made to the fire panel system. That will be coming back to the board as well. And all change orders after this one will be applied to the, to the contingency fund as part of that initial cost. And we anticipate, hopefully later this week, maybe early next, the cost for the helical pier creation and installation. So that'll also be coming forward. When we get that information, we'll be calling Mrs. Negretti McGinley as Finance Committee Chair, just to share that information. We will then sign off on that, as long as it's what we expect, and then we'll be bringing that back to the board, hopefully at the next meeting for formal approval. And again, if we have any future change orders, it will be applied to that contingency fund and will follow the same process, speak with Mrs. Negretti McGinley, and then back to the board for formal approval.
So just a clarification, then. We're adding this for the, what we dug out for the investigation part, which is completely understandable, and adding it so it's not coming out of the contingency whatsoever. There's still roughly 90-ish thousand left in the contingency at this moment. What do we anticipate, and I know you're still looking, but do we have a ballpark of what these helical piers are gonna look like? And then on top of that, does, do those, the helical piers, are they going into the contingency, or are we gonna be adding on yet again?
So when the structural engineer designed this, the first question is basically, you know, what we're putting in there, correct? So it looked like we were, my guess would be similar to the big wooden pile-driven stakes down in there. I thought we would put four big helical piers. And talking further with the contractor, I believe they're gonna use smaller and probably 19 helical piers. One, I believe that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna drive them down. It'll probably be a depth of about 30 feet. That cost, I believe, I'm just rough ballpark, I believe we're gonna be looking at in excess of $50,000. Okay, so the 81,000 some odd dollars was for removing that big wall of concrete, taking the hole that we had to dig, refilling it with CA7, which is like chipstone, that, you know, binds together very well and creates a support, but you're filling 10 feet back in to an enlarged excavation site. We enlarged it because we had to get bigger equipment in. To get the bigger equipment in, you can't take the safety risk of having it collapse. You have to pull the walls back and ramp. Okay?
And then is the 50, is the 50,000 coming out of the contingency then? If it's 50, or whatever the number is?
Yes.
Okay, that enters your second.
Thank you. Yep, that was.
Just, just wanted to add for the board that Mr. Devera and I visited the site this morning as well, asked similar questions. I think Mr. Barrett knows I have a little bit of a background, so we can have honest and open conversations regarding to our construction, and I think Mr. Devera and I have proved of other projects. So we've asked those similar questions, and the reason why we're increasing is because of this unknown, kind of unknown, I kind of predicted it, but this unknown that has happened. We've had conversations with Ms. Bennett and Mr. Barrett on this project, and as it moves forward, we definitely want to come back to the board with where we're at financially with this project. So there's still some numbers and some asks we have asked of the administration. We don't quite have all that together currently, but please know that we will be bringing this back to you, because we have the same questions.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
All right, then I need a motion to approve the change order number 002 related to the Murphy Elevator Project in the amount of $81,540.82, revising the total contract value for the complete construction resources, ink from $1,115,000 to $1,196,540.82.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Klinger, second by Mr. Jewett. Hearing no additional conversation, roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us.
Your support.
Thank you. And that will bring us to the first reading of board policy. Mrs. Bennett, anything you want to highlight for us on the first reading?
Yes, just three areas. So on Board Policy 280, Board Member Oath and Conduct, it does have an option there that the board can add into the policy, which I don't see anything wrong with it, but just this was completely open for your decision. So I'll just read it. So we have a board member who fails to abide by the oath of office or the code, may be subject to action by the board, including but not limited to formal censure and/or referral to the regional superintendent for removal from office under Board Policy 260, board member removal from office. So simple, but an option. And then heading down to 6235, it does add new optional language related to student use of artificial intelligence tools, and administration does recommend that we include that. And lastly is one that was not part of Press 118 or 119, it's a manual change that we're recommending for Policy 890, parent organizations and booster clubs, just clarifying the expectations and best practice for parent and booster group activities, giving us, I mean, we already have the right to request financial information from them if we wanted, but this outlines it in policy more clearly. So I'm not sure if you want to have a discussion on that first item tonight, or if we just want to bring it back for the second reading and a decision then? So either way, it's okay?
Yeah, I think definitely. I agree with going ahead and having it added.
Agreed.
You have, oh, you had a, you had a squinty face, so I couldn't, I couldn't play them. Okay. Resting squinty face, got it, check. Okay, so yeah, I think what you're hearing from the board is, at least the ones that are here tonight, unanimously saying that we'll go to the second reading with the recommendation to go ahead and add that. Any additional questions from the board? Hearing none, we will move to the financial part of the, of the conversation. Take it away.
Good evening. I think I have about five or six resolutions on the agenda for this evening. The first.
Like three minutes.
I can, I can do this in three minutes or less. So the first resolution is your FY26 Resolution regarding the designation of depositories and Signatories. This is not a new resolution for the board. This is coming as a result of Illinois School Code as well as board policy, and this was reviewed at the Finance Committee. So we are asking now that the board adopt the resolution as presented.
Yes, reviewed at the Finance Committee and of course, in support of.
And this is the annual one, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
All right. I need a motion to adopt the resolution regarding the designation of depositories and signatures for the fiscal year 2025-2026, as presented and authorized administration to execute, execute, execute all associated necessary documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Devera, second by Mr. Jewett. Hearing no additional conversation, roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yeah.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
I'm staying.
Motion carries.
The next item on your agenda is FY25 GASB 87 as well as GASB 96 Fund Balance Transfer. This is a new resolution for Round Lake School District 116. This is something that the district is actually required to do each year. Each year when we make these lease payments, our auditors actually come in at the end and they reclassify our lease payments. What we're trying to do here is be a little bit more transparent with this process by having the board actually adopt a resolution and doing that transfer in-house instead of having our auditors do it. They still will be reviewing the transaction at the end of the day, but this way, we actually have a resolution that documents that this was approved and this is happening. And again, this is related to GASB requirements, which is your governmental accounting standards board. So it's like you're head of accounting, for lack of a better term, for government associations.
And again, reviewed and discussed at Finance, and obviously in full support. Again, if we can do this, and we should be doing this, versus our auditors.
Hearing no additional conversation?
Actually, I have a question. Is that considered a service? Is that considered a, because it's not a finding when they do that?
No, no, it's not a finding. They're just actually, just keeping us in compliance, so they do it as part of their journal entry each year. So each year, they'll go through and they'll find certain things that have to be reclassified, and they'll do that as part of our reclassification process. Now, if we had intentionally done this incorrectly, that's when you would get a finding. But if you actually let your auditors do it, then you don't get a finding as long as you are aware that it needs to be done, if that makes sense. So if, say, Tina and I were not aware that these types of things needed to be done, then your auditors can come in and actually give you a finding that you're not able to re-review your own financial statements. So that's one of the nice things about having a CPA who actually works for the district as well as have somebody whose background is in accounting, because we understand those things, and that keeps us from that finding. The next item on your.
I need to read, gotta read the motion.
Yeah.
I need a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing fund balance transfer pledge for the payment principle on GASB 87 lease and GASB 96 SBITAs transferring $2,802,221.7 from Fund 10 to Fund 30 as presented and authorized administration to execute all associated necessary documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Klinger, second by Mr. Jewett. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the next item on your agenda is our resolution to move fund balance from Fund 10 to Fund 20, and then from Fund 20 to Fund 60. The reason we can't do a fund balance transfer from Fund 10 to Fund 60 is Illinois School Code does not allow us to do that. But we can do this transfer as presented. As you recall, you have approved $4.8 million worth of projects, summer projects. This transfer is to actually account for the funds to fund those projects. So what we're trying to do now is do our money transfers right when it's approved by the board, instead of waiting till the end. That way, we always have a good view when we're looking at our fund balance in Fund 10 and know what has and what has not been spent. The same goes for Item D that you just approved. Moving that money now to Fund 30, we'll then take that out of reserves so that we know when we're looking at how much cash reserves the district has, or how much fund balance, we have a true depiction of that fund balance.
And again, it was reviewed at Finance, and again, just as stated, it's just better visibility and view into those, into those funds. All right, and with that, I need a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing fund balance transfer, transferring $4,831,000 from Fund 10 to Fund 20, as presented and authorized administration to execute, 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 someone's getting executed, I don't know, execute all associated necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second by Ms. Klinger. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now I need a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing fund balance transfer, transferring $4,831,000 from Fund 20 to Fund 60, as presented and authorized administration to execute all associated necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second by Mr. Devera. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on your agenda is our FY25 Resolution authorizing interest transfers to Fund 60. As you may recall, back in May, you approved a resolution that allows the district to transfer its interest earnings to the fund in most need. What this resolution and what is coming before the board tonight is a statement that our Fund 60 is the fund that is in most need, and that is because we have many, many projects that are not necessarily funded. So what we can do each year is actually use our interest income as a savings account and make those transfers into Fund 60 to allow us to save money for future projects. So what we have, provided you is our interest income this year through May, which accounts to almost $2.1 million, but we've also given maximum transfer amounts based on the fact that we still have June to be accredited to the district. So while we have received $2.1 million right now, you would be authorizing up to $2.5 million, but not to exceed, obviously, what we have received in interest income for the fiscal year of FY25.
And again, this has been reviewed at Finance, and I think this is a great way to do this, unfortunately, as we just heard with the Murphy Elevator, because that's what we need. Right, and with that, I need a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing interest transfers to Fund 60, authorizing the chief financial officer to transfer interest income from eligible funds into the Site and Construction Fund up to the specified amount as presented, and authorized administration to execute all associated and necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Klinger, second by Mr. Devera. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item on your agenda is our FY25 Investment Report. Board policy requires that an investment report be brought to the board at least quarterly, which we are doing so. This was also reviewed at the Finance Committee on June 16th, but we have kind of developed a nice, pretty graph for you, as well as some very informational items on our interest income as a whole. And right now, our current process of basically keeping it in a very liquid account seems to be serving the district well. We did note that in asking PMA what, what type of a return we would get if we actually tied our funds up, and that is the issue, if we send it to PMA, they get tied up, so they're not as liquid for us, and their rate was comparable to the rate that we're currently getting with liquid funds. So we will be continuing as is, but the report is for your information.
Thank you. I love the layout of the report, so thank you very much for that.
I love Excel. What can I say? The next item on your agenda is our three-year registration fee report. This was requested by a board member and brought to the Finance Committee, but basically identifies how much the district has assessed, waived, collected, and has outstanding from FY24, '25, '23, '24, and '22, '23.
Before we continue, I know you went to H, but I just want to go back to G for the investment report, because again, I just want to mention, I know it was noted that Finance reviewed that, but again, we had those discussions in regards to the cash on hand and the liquidity of our funds. So I know Ms. Ainsault mentioned about PMA versus State Bank of the Lakes, so I just want the board to know that we were involved in those conversations. Now on to H. As mentioned, that's, this has been requested by Finance over time, and again, it's just to see what we're collecting. You know, we've had other conversations in regards to fees, but this gives you to see what we're able to. we're able to collect from the community.
No, thank you. Definitely paints a picture. Any additional questions from the board on the collection report?
Is there any idea what causes the dip in the assessed? Like for instance, in twenty three, twenty four?
Let me take a look one second. The only thing that would really cause uh, a dip in assessed would be twenty three, twenty, it would be um, actual enrollment figures because assessed is how much is assessed in total. Are you seeing a significant variance?
I just think it's interesting that it was one point two six eight, then one point two four oh, and then it went to one point two seven eight. It's just the assess from year to year to year, right? I just, it's just interesting why, because it doesn't fluctuate in students that much, does it?
Well, you also have driver's education fees, technology fees, all of those additional fees like um, the PE uniforms themselves are thirty seven thousand dollars. So I think if you do, you know, something different with PE and only do half the PE uniforms, you could see a fluctuation of fifteen thousand right there.
And also theoretically going back, kind of, I see what you're saying, Mr. Jewett, but if you go back in twenty two, twenty three, we were still just getting driver's ed back up and running from the COVID world. So that one definitely, because you can kind of look at it and see that driver's ed was assessed at thirty three, eight in twenty two, twenty three, and then jumped up to fifty one, five. So potentially that as well. And then again, another seventy six K in twenty four, twenty five, which is where we added the extra, the extras um, car and drivers and all of that. But good question. All right, hearing no additional questions there. Now on the uniform bids.
Good evening. So our FY twenty six fiscal unit, education uniform bid has previously never been bought, brought to the board. But this year, when it came across my desk, it was reaching the threshold that made it look like we may need actually be required to physically bid it. Um, but given our timeframe, we were not allowed to bring this in front of the finance committee. So I had given the finance committee um, chairperson a call to let her know that this would be presented without finance committee approval. The good news is that after doing our bids, um, we received at three actual bidders and our pricing went down from eighteen dollars um, per uniform to eight dollars and fifty cents per uniform. So we are now requesting that the Board of Education um, award the bid to Will Enterprises in the amount of twenty two thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars and twenty cents.
Right. I just want to clarify, well, it didn't have uh, finance approval, we supported it still. Uh, just so you know, that's why they reached out. So I, I do want to specify that because it's not that we don't support it, it just wasn't brought to go through the proper channels of finance first, then the board. In discussions with Aim Soul, it was agreed we would let it come here for this process because that window was missed. So I just want to clarify that.
Do we have a theory, idea of, I mean, obviously we were at a much higher per student cost on the prior ones. And now that we bid it, all of a sudden it crashed to the bottom. So do we, do we have a theory as to when that may have bottomed out and had we been paying too much for too long? Kind of question mark.
My understanding is um, in the past, they had just gone for quotes, which didn't require that competitive bid price. And when you do a competitive bid, sometimes people will come in um, much lower. So I can't really speak to what happened previously. I will say that it was, I believe, ten dollars um, per uniform with the second lowest bidder and it was eighteen dollars for, for the highest bidder. So we're, other than to say that it's coming in well under, we did receive two samples to review. Unfortunately, with the shutdown, we have not had Sarah Fontana be able to actually physically take a look at them to be sure that they are um, they meet all of our, our specifications. So tonight, if you approve this uh, Will Enterprises as our vendor, Sarah Fontana will be reviewing those two shirts tomorrow. We will move forward with executing the contract. But if she reviews the shirts tomorrow and for some reason they're not of the same quality that she is expecting, then we will basically disqualify the bidders and come back and, and notify the board.
But the bid does have a specific brand that they are to use.
Yes.
We hope and should, it should meet. Because in the bid, it does list a specific brand or manufacturer for, for the shirts. So it should be of the same, but maybe hopefully, how I'm about the yellow and the blue, that should meet.
We're hoping. Uh, I really do believe that this is going to turn out um, amazing for not only uh, the district, but for our families as well.
Yeah, Will, Will does a lot of work in southeast Wisconsin. I see them a lot on the athletic side. Hearing no additional questions?
I need a motion to approve the award of the fiscal year twenty twenty six physical education uniform bid to Will Enterprises in the amount of twenty two thousand, two hundred and eighty two dollars and twenty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second by Ms. Klinger. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the last, last item I have on your agenda is the PE uniform fee revision. So with that revision of an eighteen dollar cost down to an eight dollar and fifty cent cost, we'd like to pass that savings on to our families.
Obviously it changes the, you know, again, that was discussed uh, with Ms. Ainsault. So we obviously want to change the fee that we originally approved based on what we thought were the price of gym uniforms. So pass that on to our, our families.
Hearing no additional questions?
Motion to approve the revised fiscal year twenty twenty six PE uniform student fee of eight dollars and fif- fifty per set broken down at four dollars per shirt and four fifty per pair of shorts.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Jewett, second by Mr. Devera. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will take us to Dr. Schitt.
Good evening. Um, we're bringing to you a staffing and position control change as a result of some increase in numbers at the early childhood center that warranted an additional classroom. Uh, subsequently to that, uh, we had um, determined that three of our uh, students in the third grade instructional class at Indian Hill had uh, withdrawn and thus that uh, didn't require a full section at Indian Hill, but to combine it as a three, four section. So we're bringing to you tonight, we had talked to uh, Ms. Negretti McGinley about bringing this now because it's a net zero cost to shift both the FTE of the teacher and the TA over to the early childhood center from Indian Hill. And so we're respectfully requesting that you grant that position change control.
That, as you heard, Dr. Schitt mentioned that, you know, that was uh, reviewed. Obviously, it's a net zero, it's really just a shifting of, of positions to meet the needs, obviously, of our students.
Hearing no additional questions?
Need a motion to approve the staffing and position changes for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Klinger, seconded by Mr. Devera. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Um, we're bringing to, forward to you um, the um, approval for confidential employee contract. Uh, Ms. Mulholland was omitted from the May fifth uh, list that was um, uh, for all administrators and confidential. So we're bringing it forward to formalize her contract for the year and that would end um, all administrative and confidential uh, contracts to this point.
I need a motion to approve the confidential employee contract for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Devera, seconded by Ms. Klinger. Roll call please.
Mr. Devera?
Yes.
Mrs. Negretti McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Jewett?
Yes.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes.
Mrs. Klinger?
Yes.
Motion carries. And that will bring us to positive occurrences. I've got, really, I don't have anything district wise. I mean, camps are, camps are clicking along well and uh, just hoping everybody's enjoying their summer as quickly as it is flying by. I did get a chance to get up and see Mr. Jewett um, at his, at his stand uh, weekend back and it was absolutely delicious. Always recommended a hundred out of ten.
Uh, I was just going to add, you know, the art bus, I know that was very successful. I always love when my neighbor kids come to show me their art stuff. So I, I always get great feedback from it. So I appreciate that we were able to do that for the kids.
I just, I have one. It's really more district wide. I heard, I just want to compliment all the hiring managers this year, um, specific to the administrative team. I feel like we're way ahead of where we've been in the past um, in terms of kind of finalizing our positions administratively. I also am sensing a very nice combination. We always want the best candidates and we, the board, as you've seen, we definitely promote people internally. And I feel like we have a nice combination of bringing people up through the system with hiring external candidates. And we're recruiting people and I feel like very good about the team and um, I just want to compliment how serious we take the hiring process, the HR department, but the hiring managers themselves. And we are seeing more than, I've been, it's, you know, gosh, it's, I've been doing this a long time. We had a really big downturn in number of applicants for positions. I mean, even a little bit pre-COVID and we're starting to see that swing back. Uh, we're getting fairly significant numbers of people applying for jobs now, which increases the candidate pool, increases the quality. So I feel very, very good about the team that we're, we've assembled. So I just want to compliment hiring managers.
All right, hearing nothing else on positive occurrences, future agenda items.
I have one. I wanted to see if it's possible if we could put together some way to kind of advertise or provide information about our driver's education. Um, I think two things are happening. I don't know if as many parents know about this as should. Also, I think there's an issue possibly potentially with payment for it. So I don't know if we have like a possible way to promote it more or um, encourage them. I'm seeing like, I'm just from my kids' friends and so forth, a gr- a large groups of people not taking it and then just trying to get their license at eighteen, but it is preventing them from job opportunities.
Yeah, and I mean, we have more driver's ed cars than we've had since I've been here. So I, you know what we'll do? Maybe we can have somebody from the team call you, get some specifics, because I think any strategy we would use, we could run that through the community engagement committee. So.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Shouldn't the counselors be involved somewhere with that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I would say, I, I don't know in this day and age, but I, it, it seems like kids are less. I was ready to drive at fourteen. I actually didn't get in trouble. Um, but I guess it's, there's less urgency. Like all of us hit this table the second we hit sixteen, like that day we went and got our license. That's just not happening now. But I want to make sure it's not because we aren't communicating, because again, you as a board have invested in additional driver's ed. What do we have, three now? Four? We used to have two.
Right.
And so we, there's many more opportunities to do it. We have the number of instructors, so um, we'll have somebody reach out to you and then bring it back.
Is it also, I guess it'd also be nice to find out if it's the scheduling that's the conflict, because that's what I've heard is scheduling is the con, is, is really the reason or the conflict for our students and families to sign up. And I can speak from experience, uh, at least, you know, when my uh, students here, it's because of um, them being in AP classes. And then of course athletics and fine arts. There is no way we could work driver's ed into their schedule. So I just pay privately. But again, that is not always an option for a lot of our families as well.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Sarah Fontana, I'll definitely, um, Jennifer, have her give you a phone call. She's responsible for our driver's ed programming. Um, but I, I did want to say that going into this school year, we scoured every teacher's certification and we have a special education teacher with a driver's ed cert. We have an English teacher with a driver's ed cert. So that was something that Jeff Dees was looking at, like even if there is a study hall where we could be paying them the driver's ed so that we can fill in more periods and give kids more access. Uh, the other thing that I think is worth celebrating, this summer, we created a new summer position where we had a driver's ed monitor and a staff member, their sole job was to call kids and schedule driver's ed. So we, I'll have Sarah put together an update for you guys. We've run more driver's ed behind the wheel sessions this summer than I think any of us have ever seen because we had that staff member schedule it. Because that was our huge chant for a family to know like, when can I go? And then the kids are trying to call and it never went well. So that was something that Sarah added this year that we're really excited about. Um, we just, and we paid for most of the dri- all of the driving in June was paid for through the after-school grants. Um, but then I know Sarah reached out to T to say, okay, we got more kids in than we thought we would. So we're still scheduling more for July.
So then what we should do is bring it to the full board then. Like, if we're going to do that, given what you said and what you just shared, I think it, it does warrant a separate item just to share information to the full board.
Because I was going to ask, I know, uh, I mean, you brought it up, but s- summer's driver's ed wasn't always a viable option. We weren't doing that. And, and again, um, depending on the student's activity of sports, even in the summer, but so like study hall, that kind of stuff. But I know, like it seemed like driver's ed for summer kind of fell off here.
But I wonder if that's just because they don't know about it. Because I.
We just brought it back.
Right.
We just brought it back.
So that's what I'm saying is I think.
Say, we, we had it before.
Mm-hmm.
And then it, I know it just kind of fell off. But to hear that it's back and that we're reaching out to families, that's really good.
What we did previously is it was up to the driver's ed teacher to reach out to the kids. So the teacher would do, you know, a couple of hours a day and if they tried to call a kid in it, but we hired a separate person to just make phone calls. So that person was crazy diligent of like, call and leave message, call and leave message, and they booked every driver every time that driver was willing to drive. Um, so I will have Sarah put together kind of a, an update and make sure we get that on the next meeting. She actually might be on vacation for the next meeting, but I, we can bring it in August.
Any additional future agenda? All right, hearing none. I will call adjourned at eight oh three PM. Everyone have a great evening and we'll see everybody in a couple of weeks.